Let's do national water and wastewater work. How are you?
Good.
Frank County, Des Moines, Iowa. Good to see you. All right. Can everybody hear us? Uh, we've got a special proclamation and I'm going to ask some of our great representatives here from the city of Des Moines and our wastewater treatment to, uh, this is National Water and Wastewater Workers Week. Guys, any quick comments?
No, this is just a declaration or a proclamation from the mayor or the governor of Iowa, just recognizing the talent that we have here. We have Chris Bickle and Tim Runde, who are operators out at the wastewater treatment plant. It's just nice to know that, you know, while we're, uh, they do the best, uh, they treat wastewater to the best of their abilities to meet the MPAS permit that we have. And then also, you know, it's a thing of when we are, um, you know, enjoying time with our family, we're enjoying the holidays, these individuals are out at the wastewater treatment plant, making sure that the water is treated to the best it possibly be in. It's actually a little bit cleaner than what's actually in the river. So it's just something to recognize those folks. And then also, uh, this is water and wastewater. So our friends at Des Moines Water Works too, we got to recognize them as well because they provide a service too. So just a nice recognition for everybody around the state that do the, the hard work in the wastewater and water industry.
All right. And just to remind everybody, this is a Des Moines proclamation, not a governor's proclamation, just, just so everybody knows. So the proclamation reads as follows, "The city of Des Moines relies on clean water for the protection and preservation of public health, natural resources, and the environment. And whereas the Des Moines Metropolitan Wastewater Reclamation Authority protects public health and enhances the environment by recycling wastewater and being the preferred treatment facility for hauled liquid waste. And whereas Des Moines Water Works operates three water treatment plants to provide clean drinking water, uh, to approximately 600,000 customers of the Des Moines metro area. And whereas these agencies operate and maintain infrastructure and provide services that are essential for everyday life, economic growth, and environmental protection in the city of Des Moines. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Des Moines Metropolitan Wastewater Reclamation Authority and the Des Moines Water Works are materially influenced in the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they provide. Now therefore, I, the mayor of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and the citizens in Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the week of August 20th to 26th, 2023, as National Water and Wastewater Workers Week. And in the city of Des Moines, and I recall and call upon all of our citizens and civic organizations to appoint themselves with the issues involved in recycling wastewater for the prevention of our, prevention of disease and protection of our environment and providing clean drinking water for the protection of public health." So let's give them all a great big hand. Are there any individuals here from VoteSmart? Come on up. Anybody want to say anything or shall I just read this special? Go ahead.
That's a little like.
Let's point it down. Maybe that'll.
Does it work a little bit better? All right. Good. Well, thank you and thanks to the mayor and the city council for doing this. Um, we're with VoteSmart. We are a nonpartisan voter education. Uh, so we have nonprofit. So we have a huge website at votemart.org. Um, so you can look at your candidates and your elected officials, uh, to see where they vote on issues, um, and their campaign finance information, uh, how they got rated from special interest groups. And so you can kind of keep track on how the people that work for you are doing our job. So, um, so we're celebrating 30 years and being an existence. Uh, we're in our new home here, uh, right next to Drake University. Um, so, and we're keeping the doors open, keeping the facts free for everyone. So, thank you.
All right. Very quickly, this certificate of special recognition is presented to VoteSmart. The city of Des Moines issues this certificate of special recognition to VoteSmart. For 30 years, VoteSmart has been the leading source of nonpartisan information on politics and has served millions of Americans. The institution is hosted by Drake University and is deeply connected and engaged with our communities. VoteSmart was founded by Presidents Gerald Ford and Jimmy Carter, Senators George McGovern and Barry Goldwater, and Richard and Adelie Kimball, and is funded by small donations. This free service has been supported by countless volunteers, interns, and staff dedicated to preserving an informed electorate and our democracy. Presented this 21st day of August, 2023. And let's all quickly get a picture. Thank you. All right. We're going to get started in just a sec. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, welcome to the August 21st Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board Meeting. I will quickly, um, call the meeting to order and ask clerk take roll.
County?
Here.
Bosin?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Item passes. Item three is approving, um, the submittal of the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency's, um, 2023 Section 8 Management Assessment Program, the CMAP certification, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Board Communication Number 23-386.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, I'll ask everybody to, uh, to vote. You need to.
I hit the wrong one.
Okay. Could you wipe it?
I'm trying. My finger's not.
McNuckles.
There it goes.
Sorry about that.
Six yes.
All right. And that kind of completes our item on the agenda. Could we have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Then moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Our meeting is adjourned. We are now going to move quickly to our, um, Des Moines City Council meeting. Again, welcome everybody to our August 21st meeting. Uh, we had our proclamations. We'll call our meeting to order and, uh, I'll ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Bosin?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved, but quickly I'll, um, give everybody the, um, uh, the consent agenda. Item 16 is updated, uh, for 3614 Sixth Avenue. That's the only update.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote. We're okay.
Six yes.
Yeah, right. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 30. Um, there are, is one request, item 21, Councilmember Gatto wishes to speak.
Move approval.
Ask everybody to vote.
Six yes.
All right. That takes us to item 31. Item 31 is our hearings. Again, tonight before our hearings for the hearing items, uh, we have several conveyance hearings, one zoning hearing, that's item 34, and two, uh, design alternative hearings, and one informal hearing. As a reminder, for the zoning item only, we're going to, uh, which is item 34, we will hear from the parties in interest. Again, those, that's the individual, the applicant on one, or people within 250 feet, which have been notified, um, of and received a notice from the city. After all the parties in interest have commented, we'll then open it up for the general public comment and to aid in recognizing the parties in interest, uh, who may wish to speak on, on the item. I will ask everyone else not to step forward until those individuals have spoken. Uh, if someone does and is out of turn, uh, you will be recognized as disruptive and won't be allowed to speak, not only in that item, but for the rest. But we haven't had any problems with that, uh, of late, so we're not anticipating that. After all the parties in interest have been called upon, the general public will be called. And again, uh, comments, uh, on the item, not to exceed, um, one minute per person to a maximum of seven minutes per hearing. Uh, for the informal hearing this evening, any person may make germane comments. Again, at not to exceed, uh, one minute per person until the comments cease unless the hearing is ended sooner, uh, for failure to make, uh, germane comments, um, in the public portion. For all the other hearings this evening, any interested person may make germane comments at not to exceed one minute per person, uh, to a maximum of five minutes per hearing unless the hearing again is ended for failure to make germane comments or the public comments are just concluded. Um, we'll go ahead and open up our first item this evening again is item 31. Item 31 is on the conveyance of vacated alley right of way located north of and adjoining 810 Shaw Street to Antonio Ramos for $50. Um, we'll again open it up quickly for germane comments, um, regarding this conveyance at 810 Shaw Street. Anybody? Seeing none?
None. Move item 31.
I'll second.
31 has been moved and seconded.
Six yes.
Item 32 is on the conveyance of city-owned property at 1603 Clark Street and 1713 Street to Woods Bibbin Company LLC for rehabilitation of housing. Council Communication Number 23-389. Again, we'll open up for germane comments, uh, from the general public. Anybody on this item?
Seeing no one, I'll move item 32.
Second.
Item 32 has been moved and seconded multiple times.
Six yes.
Item 33. On a conveyance of city-owned property at 161722nd Street to Home Opportunities Made Easy, Inc., for rehabilitation of housing. Council Communication Number 23-390. A is approved home investment partnerships program, home, uh, community housing development organization, Chodo, funding for home opportunities made easy, Incorporated Home, Inc., uh, to construct an affordable, single-family home at 161722nd Street. Council Communication Number 23-387. Again, we'll open it up for, uh, germane general public comments. Anyone? Seeing none?
Seeing none, I'll move item 33 and 33A.
I'll second.
33 and 33A have been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six yes.
Item 34 is on a request from Sundry Church, Anthony J. Hodges, the officer for property located at 4106th Avenue and 4112 Sixth Avenue to rezone the northern 50 feet of the property from P2 Public Civic and Institutional District and N3B Neighborhood District to limited N3B Neighborhood District to allow the property to be subdivided and used for a one-household residential use. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. And first, uh, are there any parties in interest, uh, either the applicant or those people within 250 feet who would like to speak? Ask anyone in that category to step forward now. Seeing none, are there any persons from the general public who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none?
Seeing none, I will move item 33.
33A.
42A. 42A. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six yes.
Item 35 is on appeal of Midwest Radio, Inc., Rich Eichner is the owner on a denial of type-two design alternatives for a site plan on property located at 3839 Merle Hay Road. Choose one alternative below. A is to deny, or B is to approve. Again, uh, open it up. Any germane comments from the general public?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Carol Maher. I live in Ward Three. You don't have to be a pedestrian or a bicyclist to know that Merle Hay Road is dangerous. The road is on Des Moines High Injury Network as shown in the Vision Zero Action Plan adopted by the city council earlier this year. Vision Zero is more than a tagline. It is certainly more than just a CIP spending. VZ is a whole of government effort to make our streets safer for all road users. Closing curb cuts through the site plan process is a creative way to address these hazards. I urge you to deny this applicant's request to keep the curb cut open. Thank you.
Good evening, members of council mayor. Um, my name is Alec Davis. Some of you I know, some of you I don't. I'm the founder of Momentum DSM. We are a political advocacy organization advocating for a Des Moines that's more safe, accessible, and sustainable for everyone. As of August 18th, 233 Iowans have died on our roads this year, enough to fill a Boeing 767. U.S. pedestrian fatalities are at an all-time high, and our nation is in the midst of a national transportation safety crisis as our vehicles get larger and more dangerous and our drivers get ever more distracted. This is the, in this year, the city council adopted Vision Zero with the commitment to address this crisis in our streets. This request and the agenda item after it are both on the identified high injury network. The rules that are put in place to reduce the number of curb cuts and driveways and minimize conflict points between drivers and pedestrians are not imposed haphazardly. They're done because they are proven ways to make our streets safer for all road users. Allowing exemptions such as this one would be a direct signal that we do not care about traffic safety in this community and rather prefer to continue to make the same mistakes we have been doing for the past 75 years, prioritizing driver convenience over the well-being lives of everyone else. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? I'll move. Scott, um, would it be appropriate that we have a, uh, staff member just sort of show us what we're, what the issue is here? And what, um, the request is by this owner?
Yeah, we absolutely can if that's a request. So I've asked for staff to step in unless you're able to pull that up as the attachment. Meanwhile, I've asked staff to step in.
It's in the blue letter.
Rich, Rich Eichner's in the audience if, if, uh.
Folks have a seat.
Yeah. Yeah.
You did a switch. You used to call parties of interest here. You just called people. So I wasn't sure when I was supposed to come up, so. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Rich Eichner, 300 Walnut Street, Des Moines, Iowa. Um, I own Midwest Radio, Inc., which owns the building at 3839 Merle Hay. And if I can make this all work. the building at 3839 Merle Hay. And if I can make this all work... It's not coming through very well, is it?
It was better before.
This is, is that the best focus we can get?
I think it was there.
Let me try to zoom out a little bit.
Okay, it's a little hard to tell here, but this is the building 3839. This is the entrance in question. Even on this picture, you can see their cars backed up at the traffic light at the north end with Bankers Trust. And so this is a reliever entrance actually into the property. If you look at the property as it was in 2006, and again, this is...
Try to put that glare off, Donnie. We gotta kind of angle a little bit. There you go, more like that.
Okay, I'll hold it, you can talk.
Okay, well, thank you. As you see here, this was the property before I started acquiring, well, I was in the middle of acquiring properties. But as you can see, there were 25 driveways around the property in 2006. That might work. Yeah, that's better. Thank you. So 2,000 driveways, I mean, 2,000, 25 driveways, and the present situation is six driveways, as you see here. So I've removed more driveways from this area and Merle Hay Road than anybody else in the history of the city of Des Moines. So I think that deserves some consideration. This is the site, I'm going to turn this to the side up. As you can see, there are three entrances and 700 feet between Douglas and our driveway with Bankers Trust. This is the only unique driveway to this property. It comes directly into the center of the building. The driveway to the south is a shared driveway, and the driveway to the north is a shared driveway, and that was done with financing from Bankers Trust and ourselves. If you go north of the property, twice the distance, 700 feet, there are nine driveways open. So we have three and 700 feet. If you go north, there are nine driveways in 1,400 feet. If you go south of Douglas, there are 12 entrances on the east side of Merle Hay in 1,400 feet. So four times as many driveways and twice as much space. The Merle Hay corridor plan showed the driveway staying open, as you can see here. On the city's website, as recently as February, or May of 2023, the driveway was shown as open. The 2024 neighborhood sidewalk plan, which was sent to us in February, shows the driveway being open and being repaved by the city of Des Moines. So it was a little surprising that another department would say, let's close the driveway. If you look at our site plan, the other thing that's different, if you look at these cars right here, these are actually the opposite of what you saw to begin with. If you go here, I guess I should turn around. The cars are focused, if they came in here, they would be going in the right direction. The site plan, which has otherwise been approved by staff, shows the cars going the opposite way. And forgive my artwork here, but if you look at my attempt to show the difference here, if you have cars coming in this way, they will actually be going against traffic to get into these spaces in front of the building, rather than just coming right here and coming on in. The other thing I've shown here is a bus. If a bus were stopped at the bus stop, and you were behind the bus, you might be tempted to pull around to the front, making a very hazardous situation, pulling in front of the bus and causing an accident. The accidents which occur along here are at the traffic light, where you have cross-traffic competing with each other. Leaving this open, right in, right out, there's no crossing the median, is actually a safety procedure. The Merle Hay Neighborhood Association reconsidered this after they originally supported staff's recommendation, and they've now filed a letter with staff, which is in your packet, indicating that you unanimously support keeping this driveway open. So I would respectfully request that you vote to approve the type-two design alternative and waive second and third readings. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Rich, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing none, I'll move 35B, which is to approve.
Second.
And according, if you know where we're needed?
Six, yes.
Six, yes.
Item 36 is on appeal of Larry Cool on a denial of type-two design alternatives for a site plan on property located at 4424 Southeast 14th Street. Again, choose one alternative below. A is to deny, or B is to approve, or C, approve retention of two existing access driveways on Southeast 14th Street only, and D, to approve waiver of landscape requirements only. Again, we'll open it up for germane comments from the general public.
Carol Maher, Ward Three, shame. Disappointing, shameful. Once again, Southeast 14th is on the city's high injury network. Traffic speeds through the four-lane highways at high speeds, making this road unsafe for all road users, including bicyclists, pedestrians, autos, and motorcycle riders that frequent this business. These two curb cuts come right after the crest of a hill, making it especially dangerous for turning vehicles that slow to enter the parking lot. I can't continue with my prepared remarks, I'm just shocked. Mr. Gatto, I've sat in this room with you, where you begged for city staff to come up with solutions to slow down the speeds in your ward. This is an opportunity to do it. I already know how you're going to phone this one in. It's sad, and disappointing, and crushing to see the vote that you just took. And then that you let someone with germane comments speak for 278 seconds, and me for 60.
Any other speakers?
Mr. Mayor, we've had long discussion with Mr. Pelz and the owner of the property and city staff. I think we came up with an alternative that we're all in agreement. It would be, it would be C, but it'd also be including some landscaping. And I believe Laura has a copy of the landscaping, and city staff will work with them on the landscaping. I'm not sure if the trees will be on the East 14th portion of it, but they said they would work with you, Wally, and others. So I will move 36C with landscaping and this drawing included.
So I would like to just make a comment on this one, because I don't support item C.
No.
I'm explaining my no vote, thank you very much.
All right.
So the points that the speakers made earlier about Vision Zero and working to close access points like this are well-taken. We should be working to close access points. And I think there are some differences between this example and the previous one that are just worth highlighting. The previous one, you had an owner who has reduced a number of access points already. You had a building that had multiple businesses as opposed to one business, so you're preserving the access point. You had more of a split vote in planning and zoning, and you had a neighborhood association that had reconsidered its opinion. All of those things carried weight with me, and I had spent time with and heard from the owner and gotten that explanation. Here, I've not seen and seen that, and I think this is a different example. I'd like to see these access points closed. I'm probably the only one who will vote no, but I do not plan on supporting this particular item.
Mr. Mayor, just a real comment, Councilman Mandelbaum, and I appreciate your comments. Unfortunately, this is a very, very small business, and it's, it's, it's worth $104,000, the building. They put $50,000 already into it with the upgrade of getting rid of the gravel parking lot. They would have to close Southeast 14th to get rid of this access point that probably not a lot of people are going to use, maybe some motorcycles. So as we work through this, we don't want a bunch of vacant buildings on the south side or on the east 14th. And as we go through this process, what you and others want to create, and I understand the safety aspect of it, but this isn't going to, this isn't going to hurt, there has never been an accident in front of this building with the two access points. And we can go back and look at the crash history. But what you want to do is create a hardship for the owner of this building to be able to do all of these things, and not one size fits all. And I've been saying that with older buildings that are sitting there. And if we continue to go down this road, we're going to continue to have a bunch of vacant buildings. And if that's your vision of what you want the corridors to be, or we're going to give incentives to folks to be able to do the things that they need to do to bring it up to the code, maybe that's your vision, I'm not sure. But there's not a lot in the budget that we can do this. It's not in it, it's not going to work that way. So I moved, I moved it, she seconded it, and let's vote.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I mean, I'm more amenable in this type of situation, because there are two different pieces of city code that incur cost. There's the landscaping piece, and there is the access enclosure piece. I'd be more amenable to working on waiving the landscaping pieces than the access piece, because I think part of, you know, you talk about vitality and a vision for vitality on corridors. Part of creating vibrant and vital corridors is making them safer for pedestrians and for all users. And closing access points is, it's related to the crash piece, but it's also related to making a corridor safer for folks to walk along, safer for a variety of people to walk along. And I will tell you, the access point piece makes a big difference for the folks who are walking and biking along corridors. And so that goal is important. If we want to create the type of places where multiple folks get to a destination, not just, not just the folks in a car, if we want to create places that accommodate that, the access point, I mean, the access point piece is, I think, a more important piece. And so that is where, if I'm going to try and work with a property owner on cost savings, I'd rather do it there and compromise there than on the access point. So that...
And you do realize they have to close East 14th, close off that access point? Do you realize that there has to be police officers there to close it down? Do you realize the expense of that, or that just hasn't, because they have a bid to do that, and it's quite expensive, a lot more than to taking out all the landscaping. So it's been there for, I don't know, 40, 50 years, and there's never been an accident with the two spots. Now, if there was accidents there, we would be taking a different look at it, but there
Five yes, one no.
All right, note that it's 5:29 in the hearings end. That takes us back to item Item 21 is approving and authorizing the execution of agreement with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, IDNR, for the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund, LWCF, program for Stone Park Pickleball and Basketball Courts Project, Council Communication number 23-395. Mr. Gatto?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just real quick, this is a great project, and I want to thank the park staff, Ben Page, Pam Cooksey, and legal department for getting this all together. Just a couple of questions for you, Scott. And I believe that it's in the blue letter, but I just want to verify. So this will all be done during one construction cycle. Go out for bid, it'll be completed in one phase, what we talked about. And then we also talked about, if we got this grant, then there would be an open-air shelter included in this. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page when we pass this, that my constituents and the residents know that this is going to be done at the end of 2024. And I believe it says it in there, but I just want to verify with you and staff that we're all going to be on the same page. And the open-air shelter also.
My apologies, I need to verify this, because my understanding is it was still two, unless there's other projects that are preceding this. This was everything for the site, right?
I believe this was, we talked about, we talked about, we talked about it being everything, and then we also talked about the open-air shelter. If we got this, I see Ben coming in, maybe he can help.
Yep.
If we got this, then the open-air shelter would be part of it, and I wouldn't have to go out and fundraise for the open-air shelter, but it would be included in the project.
Mayor of County, Members of Des Moines City Council, Ben Page, Director of Parks and Recreation. I might have lost part of the question as I was walking in here. This is a large project that's been phased throughout the next basically 18 months to 24 months, depending on the weather and all those things. So community garden's almost done right now. That's the first feature. This action right here is for the mini pitch, as well as the basketball court resurfacing. Both flat work, both kind of lend themselves to work together. The next piece that will be out soon would be the playground, spray ground with those Orba dollars. So they're all a little bit different contracts.
And the pickleball?
And the pickleball, thank you, yes.
So that would all be completed at the end of next year, right, in 2024?
The end of 2024 is the goal, yes.
And then the open-air shelter will be included in this, well, the next phase as we, it'll all be done in 2024, I guess.
The last phase, subject to the city manager's budget allocation.
Do you recall, it was all going to be able to get completed in '24, if they maybe needed time in '25 to finish things up?
I believe it was supposed to be, the intention was to get it all done at the end of the calendar year.
That's what I thought. Okay, I mean, I thought it said that in the blue letter, but I just want to confirm, because you and I've had other discussions. So I appreciate all your help and your help with all of this. This is a great amenity that's really, really good for this area. So I will move item 21.
Six, yes.
All right, that takes us back to our informal hearing, item 37. This is authorization to proceed with the acquisition of the necessary property interests for the Central Place Levy Trail Phase One project, Council Communication number 23-383. A, we'll quickly ask if there's any person who would like to make any comments regarding this Central Place Levy Trail.
Move item 37.
Item 37 has been moved. Ask everybody to vote.
Six, yes.
Item 38 is directing advertisement for sale and approving the electronic bidding procedures and official statement for $72,630,000 general obligation bonds, Series 23, 2023A. Bonds will be sold at a special meeting on Wednesday, October 4th, at 4:30 p.m.
Move approval.
Ask everyone to vote.
Six, yes.
Item 39 is directing advertisement for sale and approving electronic bidding procedures and official statement for $21,755,000 Storm Water Management Utility Revenue Bond Series 2023B. Bonds will be sold at a special meeting on Wednesday, October 4th, at 4:30 p.m.
Six, yes.
Item 40 is on the honorary street naming of streets in the vicinity of 13th Street and Grand Avenue as World Record Way, to recognize the finish line location for record-setting performances of the Drake Relay's One Mile Road Brace Process Initiation. performances of the Drake Relays One Mile Road Brace Process Initiation.
So if I could provide just a wee bit of background, the Grand Blue Mile courses have been officially measured and certified for amount of climb and other aspects. It looks like the men's record and women's record will be established for an outdoor on-the-road mile run, and that should know soon after September 1st. But everything is teed up for that to happen, so. And that's what this is about. World records set in Des Moines in the walk-up to the Drake Relays. I would like to move this, okay?
I will second it.
Six yes.
Ordinance's first consideration. 41 is continuing and expanding the boundaries of the downtown Des Moines self-supported municipal improvement district, SMIT, beginning July 1, 2024, and providing for the continuation of an operation fund and the levy of an annual tax in connection therewith, requires six votes. Council Communication Number 23-381 is the final consideration of the ordinance above. That waiver is requested by Cody Christensen, our Development Services Director, again requires six votes. Council, any?
I'll move item 41 and 41A.
Moved and seconded.
Six yes.
Item 42 is mentioning Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows, Council Communication Number 23-384. A is a traffic control modification, 21st Street and Carpenter Avenue. B is a parking restriction at Hull Avenue between East 40th Court and East 41st Court. C is a code correction addition of the intersection of 8th Street and Mulberry Street and 9th Street to the section relating to pedestrian safety and use of medians. D is parking modification, Wallace Street between 13th Street and 15th Street. E is a new pedestrian signal at East 17th Street and East University Avenue. F is a corner clearance parking restriction. One under that is East 26th Street and Garden Street.
Happy to move 42A, C, D, E, and F, and number one. But I would really like John Davis to talk about item B because I've had quite a few discussions with neighbors, you know, some people want the parking removed, others want to keep it. I know that I've heard city staff say if we have parking on the streets, that will slow down traffic. And the neighbors are concerned that if we take away parking, then the speed is going to be increased quite a bit. It is kind of a cut through. So I know at one time city staffs told me, once they become aware of a safety concern, they have to implement those rules. So I just would like Traffic and Transportation to address it for us, just so I know that there are people listening that live on this street and are concerned, and.
Can we just continue that one and move the rest of them, and then you can get your answers?
Yeah, I turned it in early this morning, and he was going to, yeah.
Gotcha.
And hopefully we can just get it taken care of tonight. And I guess my other request would be is, the last traffic study for 42B was done in 2019. Let's, if we vote to remove the parking, can we come back in a few months and do it? I can request a traffic calming study.
Certainly. John Davis, City Traffic Engineer. With regards to your question, Councilmember Westergaard, the reason why we're looking at a restriction is the curve, the horizontal curve. And when we have either a curve or a hilltop, a vertical curve, that's when we look at site distance. And it's in engineering, we're looking at standards to enhance and improve the visibility of not only the driver, but of the driver towards other drivers, other users on a road. So that is the basis of the removal or the recommendation to remove parking in this instance. It is similar to the curve that is to the west, near the Sheridan Park. In fact, a resident saw the action of implementation of the parking restrictions that this body approved back in March of this year, and said, to the east, we have a similar situation. We looked at it and indeed agreed with their observation and brought this proposal to you to restrict the parking on the south side, on the inside of the curve, as we've done in many other locations. We can certainly look at traffic calming, revisiting the speeds. As you noted, we did a study back in 2019. It showed that the 85th percentile in this particular area, I believe, was 27 or 28 miles an hour. And in front of Sheridan Park and further to the west was at 30 miles an hour, and that does not qualify for our program. But we can certainly look at that, and we'll probably be able to look at that based on our workload as far as the speed study sometime in the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, John, while you're in the room, and Steve's here, are you taking compliments this afternoon?
Certainly, I'll take compliments anytime.
Because the new pedestrian signal, E, is a great lift by your department and in cooperation with the Iowa DOT. And that doesn't always happen, so I just want to make sure that you're aware that all the council is glowing about this addition. So, thank you, John.
And so does the neighborhood. In fact, when Anna Campos came last weekend, the last meeting and spoke, she did a shout out to your department and to Steve because everybody has really, really worked well with her, and we did it very, we did it faster than what anybody ever expected. So thank you for listening to everyone's concerns.
You're very welcome, and I will convey your sentiments to our team in the Engineering Department and Traffic and Transportation.
Faster than the speed of government, it was awesome. Thank you.
So with that, I will amend my motion to include B.
Second. You want to waive the second and third?
Yes, I would like to waive the second and third reading pursuant to item Rule 42A.
All right, been moved and seconded.
Six yes.
Thanks, guys.
All right, that takes us to item 43. That's our moment for our public to speak. For those persons who are wishing to speak this evening, under the public speaking items, we will only be calling those who have registered to speak. All speakers must comply with the rules regarding their names and addresses, or they will not be recognized. Each of the speakers this evening will receive two minutes each to make their comments. Please keep your own time because at the end of the two minutes, our clerk will call time, and the speaker's mic will be closed, and we'll move immediately on to the next speaker. We want to hear from our residents, and we encourage residents to be respectful of others' viewpoints that are different from their own. Let's go ahead and move forward. Our first speaker this evening is Don Baeney. Don?
He's not here.
All right, let's move on. Adam Callanan.
Hello, Adam Callanan, Ward three. I wanted to once again speak on behalf of virtual participation. Our city should be able to offer hybrid meetings as many other cities and counties across Iowa are doing. Just really is important for accessibility and allowing everybody to be able to speak at these meetings. Also think that speaking time should be extended from two minutes back up to five minutes. Frequently, people come in and speak during this time and don't even realize that they only have two minutes because for a long time, the city had five-minute speaking times. I also think that the sign-up to speak should be made easier. The sign-up to speak in this sort of speaking time is overly complicated and actually has to be done before the agenda is out. I don't know any real reason for that, and that should be changed to make it easier for people to sign up. We should also remove the bizarre rule disclaimers during meetings that are read aloud that threaten potential speakers with being thrown out of the meeting if they just speak at the wrong time. Creates a just weird kind of vague threat to anybody who might want to speak for the first time, might feel intimidated about that. We should also allow comment on all agenda items. Just today, just picking one topic, there was over $300,000 in DMTC business that comment was not allowed on. Thank you.
All right, Bridget Botkin. Bridget? All right, Jolene Prescott. Jolene here?
My name is Jolene Prescott. I live at 30133rd Street. And I remember back when my husband was alive, we had to go and take one of our daughters, drag her kicking and screaming to Iowa Lutheran to get some help. Sometimes you have to intervene on your adult children. It's just the way it is, you've got to do what you need to do as a parent still, even after they're beyond 18. Indira's parents and her family, you need to talk to her, and you also need to, either you or somebody needs to come and create some communication here. We can't allow this situation to go on any longer. It's not doing her any favors. And if someday she gets through all this and wants to run for election for office again, she's going to be unelectable because of what is happening here. So you need to do something. Thank you.
All right, Bobby Dane. Bobby? Right? David Helstern.
Good evening. I've been here before. I asked you to set up for hearing to remove Indira. I've given you the complaint. Your next meeting is going to be the last meeting that you can set it for hearing and remove her and still allow somebody time to get on the ballot for the November election to fill her seat. So September 11th is your meeting. We need to have a hearing to remove her, so please set it for hearing for your September 11th meeting. And just give her notice, give her proper notice. She's not going to come after the city. It's been five months, there's been nothing. Here's something she said. "I acknowledge that my power is only as legitimate as the will of the people to allow me to hold it. If I should break my oath to the people, or if for any reason the people wish to reclaim this power, my status shall be nullified and my power shall be subject to reclamation by the masses." That was her January 10th, 2022 swearing-in supplemental oath that she herself wrote and stated. She's not going to come back after you, you're not going to get sued. Please, I've given you the power, the tools to do it, please do it so that we can stop bugging you about it, and we can move on, and we can get somebody for Ward one. Because right now, your inaction about her inaction feels like complacency, and it almost feels like you don't want somebody to represent Ward one over there. So please, set it for a hearing so that we can get this done and move on.
Could you give us your address, please?
Oh, sorry, it's 803 Hickman Road.
I'll move, receiving file 43A through F, Your Honor.
All right, well, specifically, B, D, and F.
B, D, and F, yes, sir.
All right, been moved.
Six yes.
Could we have a motion adjourned?
I'll move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, this means adjourned. Want to thank all of our citizens for attending this evening, and look forward to our next meeting. Thanks, staff.